Karen, can we have a roll call, please? Karen, can we have a roll call, please? You're on mute.
There we go. Sorry, I had a little box covering my mute button. I could not get off of there. Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Mayor Bane.
Here. And I invite everybody to shut off your cameras and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Members, councilmembers here, before you, I suggested agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes. And I guess before we have a motion, I believe staff with a recommendation for item 8B, the Fenway Athletic Complex, to come off the agenda. Is that still the intent for this evening?
That is the intent for this evening.
So the motion I'm looking for then is to approve the agenda removing item 8B.
Madam Mayor, this is Council Husnick. I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda as written except for item 8B.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda is open forum. Dan, do we have any open forum submissions for this evening?
Mayor Bane, I'm going to read the open forum submissions while Dan prepares the closed session portion of the meeting.
Perfect. And before you, yeah, before you start reading, just real quick on logistics for anyone who is watching, we are still actively soliciting public comment during this period where we are meeting remotely. Instead of attending in person, we invite you to submit comments to be read during the open forum portion, and those can be sent into info@cityofforestlake.com. And just please note that in your subject line that you intend for it to be read during open forum. So happy to have some input during this time. Go ahead, Karen.
So the first letter that we have came in this morning at 8:50. It's from Eric Langness on the Planning Commission. He says, Honorable Mayor and City Council, I support City Council bypass the rigorous process that would normally include our planning commission and other involved parties for any and all temporary allowances to reopen our business community. There's great merit having broad input on policy change, but ultimately alterations are decided by council. And if matters are only temporary in nature, the value lost in that broad discussion is less than the potential value lost in our business community if actions are not expedited. Accommodating needs of local businesses on a temporary basis during this pandemic is a critical aspect of our vibrant community. When it can be determined that allowing flexibilities with zoning and public land encroachment does not pose a risk as determined by our public safety officials, we should allow business exceptions to our policies. Changes in orders at the state-national level are occurring too rapidly for the process we have in place to respond to in an efficient and effective manner. I urge council direct staff to prioritize consideration of businesses which have been impacted by the greatest, impacted the greatest by closure in the last several months. I look forward to the day we can all join together in chambers once again. Best regards, Eric Langness, Forest Lake Planning Commission Chairman. And the second email that I have also came in this morning around 11:25. It is from, I'll probably mess up the name. It's from Famati, Famati Whiney. She's the owner of Snap Fitness in Forest Lake. The email says, Dear Forest Lake Mayor and City Council, as our state leaders work to reopen Minnesota's economy, they must take action to allow our health and fitness facilities to responsibly reopen to serve the needs of Minnesotans throughout the state and our city.
Karen, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we have a tornado warning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the radar. I just got the alert too. Kelly, it's the south half of the county of the 694, I-94 corridor.
So it's not, it's not Forest Lake?
Well, they probably will hit the sirens because it is Washington County, but it's the corridor from Dakota County corner all the way up to like 94. It's the southern half of the county is what is showing on my radar.
So EMS recommendation, call an audible here. Should we adjourn temporarily? Should we continue as is? And certainly councilmembers.
It's over, it's over Rosemount, 14 miles or 14 miles south of St. Paul. We're moving northeast, so it's not going to guarantee anything, but we're north of it.
I suggest we keep going.
Yeah. Captain Weiss, can you keep an eye on it? And if we need to alter course, certainly let us know.
You bet.
Pete, you're more in the line, it sounds like, than we are. So if Pete's okay, the rest of us might be okay. How's that?
It'd be the canary in the coal mine.
Yeah, that's right.
I live with Mr. Safety, so I'm in the basement.
We're going to have issues if I have to go down to the Bane scary basement. I will have to log off. That is not something you want to see.
You can all see our painting project now.
Oh goodness. All right, back on agenda, but certainly somebody, please keep us posted. Karen, go ahead.
Okay, so what she wrote, owner of Snap Fitness, said, Dear Forest Lake Mayor and City Council, as our state leaders work to reopen Minnesota's economy, they must take action to allow our health and fitness facilities to responsibly reopen to serve the needs of Minnesotans throughout the state and our local city. These facilities are crucial in helping our community maintain and improve their physical health. Just as groceries and other stores have operated safely, have operate safely, social distancing measures have operate safely, probably through social distancing measures with those in place. We are asking that health and fitness facilities be allowed to reopen with prudent safety protocols, including capacity restrictions based on square footage to enable social distancing, operational procedures ensuring proper distancing protocols, including signage, making appropriate spacing for clients and equipment, enhanced cleaning protocols with medical-grade disinfectants, implementing hygiene and screening methods, clear communication to staff and clients about expectations, providing resources and training for employees and clients. Safely reopening all fitness facilities will allow hundreds of employees and unaccountable clients in Forest Lake to return to work and continue taking care of their health. Thank you, owner of Snap Fitness in Forest Lake.
Thank you. And just two open forum letters this evening.
That was all I had.
Councilmembers, the next item on our agenda is the closed session. And somebody have a motion to move us into a closed session?
Mayor Bane, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot 05 subdivision 3B for confidential attorney-client discussions about negotiations to settle disputed claims brought by Lighthouse Lofts LLC.
And I'll second it, Mayor Bane. This is Husnick.
Motion and a second. We are in closed session, and we will rejoin on that Zoom meeting.
Excuse me, Your Honor.
Yes.
You need to vote on that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Karen, can we, thank you. Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Now we are in closed session. Welcome back. I think we've got all members of council back. Got Patrick, Dan, Pete. I think we're good. Okay, councilmembers, we are moving on into our next agenda item, which is our consent agenda this evening. We have for your consideration consent agenda items 7A through 7E. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E.
Council Husnick, a second.
Motion and a second. Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard. Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
And Mayor Bane.
Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to our regular agenda item, item 8A, Forsome Golf Management on sale, Sunday liquor license. Karen, you want to walk us through this?
Yeah, so back on April 27th, council approved a new liquor license for Forsome Golf Management, who is the new golf course management group at Castlewood. And the liquor license was for 3-2 beer, so they could sell 3-2 beer. Because of restrictions that were placed on numerous businesses, including golf courses, they have, they have yet to use that license. Everything was submitted to the state, who has everything on hold right now in terms of issuing liquor licenses. Earlier in the year, so that's kind of where they're at right now. Earlier in the year, however, Jamie Mousha, the parks coordinator, did some research for Castlewood Golf Course and found that several other golf courses in the state of Minnesota have received special legislation to be able to sell full intoxicating liquor at their golf courses. So we went to, Karen Housley submitted language and with the hopes of receiving the same privileges for Castlewood Golf Courts. It was apparently just pushed through the legislation, and now we're waiting for the governor's signature. I don't know, Patrick, if that went through or not yet, or?
No, it was presented to the governor on the 18th of May. I do not and cannot find the recognition that he has signed it yet, according to his office. Being that there's a number of golf courses and other places that are, it's an omnibus bill that they included a whole bunch of the same kind of requests. That's why I think why it passed. He'll sign it. It's just a matter of time. So we just have to wait till we get confirmation that it's been signed.
So, so in the meantime, what we have now is an application from Forsome Golf for a full intoxicating liquor license outside of this 3-2 license that they already applied for. That will allow them full service of intoxicating liquor, also including Sunday liquor sales on the golf course. And so we are looking for council approval on this. The previous liquor license council approved. You also waived the fees for them. So with a full liquor license, the fees are a little bit more. It's $3,000 for an annual license. Sunday license is $200. And so what the recommendation is to council is to approve this liquor license and then also to waive those fees. It's actually a total of $3,700 because there is that $500 background check, which they've already passed. So the full total would be $3,700 that council would be waiving on fees along with approving the liquor license, so that I could then forward that to the state as soon as we get the word that everything's been signed by the governor.
Yeah, and I would make a recommendation, I'd make a recommendation that the motion include that if you approve it, that it's approval upon the governor's signature of the legislation.
Contingent on his signature.
Does this need to be made in two motions, or can it be wrapped into one?
I think wrapped into one.
Unless there's an objection, I don't know why we would need to.
I agree.
Well, it is great to see the legislation get passed. And many thanks to both Jamie and Senator Housley for making that happen. The nice cherry on top for what's been a good story out at Castlewood for us. So yeah, nice to see this come full circle and something got passed. Not yet the governor's desk, but we're close, so it's good. Any questions for staff or other items we should consider before we entertain a motion? Not seeing any. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for the, what do I call it? Full in, the full license?
Full intoxicating and Sunday on sale.
Full intoxicating and Sunday sale, as well as waive the fees and make it fully approved upon signature of the governor. That cover it?
Yes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Councilmember Gerard. Any additional discussion on this topic? Being done, Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
And Mayor Bane.
Aye. Motion approved. Okay, moving on to our discussion items on the agenda this evening, we have two items. First being, and they kind of feed off of each other, first being a city operations update. Patrick, do you want to walk us through that and get us started?
I sure will. As most of you know, the governor has started to lift some of the restrictions that he has imposed. However, the main thing that concerns us beyond the restaurants and the bars and things like that operationally is that the order still says that any worker that can work from home must do so. So he is recommending that we continue working from home as much as we possibly can. I thought we've done a real good job working from home right now. We haven't missed too many beats along the way. It's a little more cumbersome as these meetings are, but I think we're doing okay. So we're going to continue to let the employees as much as possible work from home. However, we do need to, we are considering and will open City Hall on June 1st. So we'll need to have maybe one or two more people in the building. What I have done is asked each employee who works in the main part of the office here to give a schedule when they can be in and working two or three days a week alternatively. Doing that so we don't have too many people right in this area. So the schedule's almost done, so we'll have enough people to answer questions, take care of the people that may come into the City Hall. We don't get that many, but we will still continue to speak with them through the glass. We will not meet with them one-on-one and close. We have a nice glass front that we can speak through. If we have to have meetings with developers or things like that, we can have Zoom meetings as well with them or telephone conferences if necessary. Most of that can be done electronically, submission of plans and things like that, so we'll continue to do that. We will continue in the building to close some portions of the building. As you see, the upstairs is closed. We'll remain to have that closed. We're not having any meetings up there. Public meetings, group meetings, so those will be closed. We'll limit access to the fire department area and towards the chambers. You will discuss later on whether you want to meet in public or continue these types of meetings. We're installing hand sanitizers in the public areas where, up at the windows and where they can take advantage of those. And like I said just a minute ago, we'll continue any Zoom meetings that makes sense to do that. So that's City Hall. And Jamie, may, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're opening the bathroom at Lakeside Park. Playground equipment is open. Parks are open. It's used at your own risk. People have to have some responsibility and understand what they're doing. Recent CDC information says that it doesn't last that long on surfaces. That may change again tomorrow, like everything else is changing on a regular basis. But we are open that. You know, the golf course is open. We've been very successful there. I think the social distancing is done well, so we will continue to monitor them. I guess the playgrounds are open. As far as, we had a little discussion in the EDA, we'll have it here, about what we're doing for the bars and restaurants. As you know, the governor has stated that they can open once June 1st comes about. But in order to do that, they have to have a plan, and they can only have outdoor dining sales as long as those outdoor dining still remain a six feet distance and only have a 50-person maximum. The parties, the reservations have to be required for parties of four at the maximum, or if it's a family, parties of six, masks will be required of their staffing. So we are working very hardly, very hard with any restaurant, any bar, any establishment that wants to expand to have outdoor dining. We are being very generous on zoning issues. We're not letting them get in our way. Part of the emergency powers that you adopted allow us to change operations when we feel necessary. So we will work with any restaurant. We've already talked to the American Legion today, the VFW and a few other restaurants. And all they have to do is basically fill, those who do not, and do not have a public patio now. If you have a public patio, you don't need any permission from us to open it as long as you meet the standards, whatever the governor says. However, if we're adding public patios to those who do not have it, such as the American Legion, such as the VFW or let's say Mallards or Applebee's. Well, Applebee, Mallards wants to expand theirs, but we will work with them. We ask them to fill out an application, give us a diagram of what it, what it looks like, and we will do our best to get that approved quickly and without any delay. We are also looking at assisting. The reason why we want to plan is that some of these expanded spaces will be in parking lots and have traffic through spaces. But we want to make sure people can't drive through them. We're looking at, we're looking at actually providing some of these establishments barrels or some kind of a concrete barriers or something along those lines. We haven't quite finished that out to, that would stop a car from going through there. 50, 55 gallon drums filled with water, or if you see those highway barriers, we're seeing what's more affordable, and we may supply that for them. We'll know that the next day or two, depending on the cost. So I think we've been very aggressive on the restaurants and bars and whoever else wants to open. So if you know restaurant owners who want to do that or have issues, just have them get in contact with us. The application's been on the line, online since I think it was Friday the governor announced this, but Thursday of last, last year, last week. Friday morning, the application and process was in place already. So we're ready for them, and I think that's the operational issues. Public Works is working. They're still trying to catch up from when they were alternating shifts. Police are still working and are taking safety precautions. And fire is also still working with their safety precautions still in place. So we will monitor it, but we will continue to do the shifts in City Hall through the end of June or unless something changes from the governor's office.
Questions for Patrick on anything, anything that was discussed or other things we should be considering, Councilmember Gerard?
No, Patrick, I just wanted to thank you for that thorough update on the restaurant and bars. I mean, these businesses are going to have to put some money and effort in to get tables and chairs. And it's just good to hear that we're not going to make them jump through any hoops in order to be, be successful. Whether people come or not, that's their individual decision, but I think we need to give them every opportunity to be successful.
Yeah, and I think that's the biggest response. I think that's where we can help them the most right now. There's been talk about rebates of liquor licenses and other things, but those are really small amounts of money. If we can get them active, get a patio set up for those places that don't have one and have outdoor service, a safe outdoor service, I think we're doing actually better for them than anything else.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment, just saying thank you again to all the city staff who got that on the website right away the next morning. I think that was, that was pretty awesome. So thank you. There wasn't much time in between the announcement and when you had it on there.
No, I have to, I thank Commander Weiss, Captain Weiss, I should say, and everybody else who's involved with it. They really came through on this one, Al from the fire department. So we had a quick meeting on Thursday or Friday morning, and Karen turned it around as fast as we could there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Husnick, go ahead.
As you know, I served on the EDA meeting tonight too, and that subject came up. And I'm really pleased to hear that we're doing everything we can to help these people, these restaurants, because I can't imagine what they're going through trying to get started again and trying to keep their business alive. And I'm just worried about us losing a restaurant or two in this city. So thanks to the staff and everybody else for really keeping an open mind on this thing and making it as easy as possible to move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Beistrum.
I just wanted to echo those thanks. You know, we really value what we have here, and it is important that we do everything we can to try to help them remain viable, you know, through this time. I'm curious on the perspective of the EDA on this issue tonight. Can you summarize the conversation you had at that meeting?
Well, I think it was similar to what we're having now. I think, I think there is a desire to help the restaurants as much as possible. One of the issues that came up is that there was some, may have been some confusion out at the restaurants. I don't actually know how, that people with patios already thought they may have to have an application and a process to go through, which is not true. So if your constituents call you in their restaurant owner or anything like that, and they have a patio, they don't have to ask us a thing to operate the patio as long as they're in compliance with what the governor says. But have them call us and things like that. So the EDA was interested in, for the city to do as much as possible to open up the restaurants and assist them as much as we can.
I would expand on that just a little bit and also reflect some of the feedback I heard in that. I think there was some confusion. This went out really quickly, and there, I think there was some confusion around what the intent was. And as Patrick mentioned, perhaps around businesses that have patios today, we're thinking, what, now you're going to make me apply? And that isn't the intent. The intent is for expanded service capacity. And I think that that was maybe some misunderstanding. And so whatever we can do to get that message back out there of, no, this is intended to be of assistance and actually a removal of red tape and barriers, that is our goal. So. I just have to say, I've gotten some feedback as well from some business owners that would like us to take a bolder statement. And when they, when I've had an opportunity to have a discussion about it, there seems to be some understanding. But the initial ask comes in on some other municipalities have declared their city open for business and have, you know, kind of condemned the governor's guidelines at various levels of severity. And I just have to come back to, I just think that that is unwise. One being, we don't have the authority to override a governor's emergency declaration. And I think those, you know, those cities that have done so are, that's a protest vote. And they certainly have an, you know, an opportunity to make a protest vote. But in my perspective, that just creates more confusion, and we don't need more confusion. Because no matter what we say about being open for business, you know, the governor's orders stand, and we need to help businesses find ways to operate within that. And so I think we're putting our effort where we should. But I do think that there are some folks that see that application and see the, the reference. the reference to the governor's guidelines and they feel like it misses the mark because they wanted a bigger statement from us. And again, I just come back to, I just, I couldn't support that and um just wanted to make that known.
I agree, Mara. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bean.
Any other um topics of consideration related to kind of city operations and where we are today? Not, we'll transition into our next subject matter, um, which is related to our in-person meetings and how we um, want to conduct in-person meetings um at the council level and also at the commission level. Um, maybe just quick background reminder that we are operating under um, the ability to hold remote meetings under the emergency order. And we have an emergency order that goes until mid-June at this point. And we have um, you know, potentially some options to extend that if necessary. Um, but as we start thinking about getting back to, you know, what our new normal is going to be for the foreseeable future, I'm interested in feedback from you. Um, if we're at the point in the meeting where my headset dies, so sorry about that. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Um, so you know, if that emergency order, um if that emergency order changes, our rules of procedure today do not allow for remote meeting participation. Now, we could change our rules of procedure and allow that for the foreseeable future, but that looks different than what we have today. Um, and so just knowing we've got a couple of weeks here of um the current um status quo. Just wanted some feedback on thoughts on getting together for more in-person meetings. Um, and also I guess maybe wanted to share some um observations I've had around this process. Um, the planning commission held a um a a public hearing um remote. And if you go back and look at that tape, I actually think that being remote provided better public input. Um, the Ethan Court folks all met in the garage and passed her on the laptop and provided public comments. Um, I'm not sure they all would have shown up in open forum um to speak at a public hearing. Um, so we may want to consider ongoing remote participation, but if we want to do that, we do need to reconsider our rules of procedure and that takes some time for staff to put together. So just wanted some feedback from you all as we consider what looks, what we looks like for us to get back together. Um, our commissions to get back together and what we do within an emergency declaration and what we do for our new normal. So so thoughts from anybody or and staff, feel free to chime in if there's other pieces of this that you need as well as feedback points on how we consider future meetings.
Yeah, I think that.
Councilmember Beister.
Go ahead.
Um, I I think much, much like the city and and probably a lot of our employers um at the uh request of the governor, if we can, if we can continue to be effective uh doing our work in a remote manner, um, my personal opinion would be that um we would continue to do so um until we have a, uh, until we see how this evolves. I think we're learning new things about this virus every day. Um, and how it works and how how contagious it is and I and and how it's spread. And um, you know, one of the things that is is we're hearing a lot about is that if you're in a in an enclosed area in close proximity to an individual for a period of time, you have a greater likelihood of of it being contagious, of acquiring it. So um, I think given that, um, I would really, I I I feel like we, I feel like we, you know, this is we function pretty well in this space. Um, and I think we're getting better and better at it uh every, every meeting that we have. And so my vote would be to um continue with the status quo.
Thank you. Other than that?
Um, Mayor Bean, I was just gonna add, it seems to me if we're, if we're following this in other ways, such as the city staff working from home, I wouldn't want to make them come in. Um, just in some of the, you know, the things that you have said in terms of making a statement, I feel like we should continue to follow that guidance. Um, I too think we've pretty done pretty well um remotely. And I don't know, it's been, it's been pretty effective. My only question would be, are we hearing feedback from residents? Or anything about it being difficult?
I I can speak.
I guess feedback from, yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Just some of the resident feedback. The only, it's not a difficult aspect. It's just more that we've had to change where the live stream links go. Based on our, we're not using the old system. So until they go to the site, it's usually marked on the homepage of the city's website, but a lot of residents are going in through the meeting portal. And that still reflects the old stream. So and and unfortunately, I can't go in there and change that, that site base our database for our agenda management software. That's the only confusing point I, that's been kind of coming up that I'm aware of. But once they get the new link, that tends to go away after the next meeting.
And if there's anywhere we can be helpful getting that out too.
And I'm, I'm fine either way. Um, personally, I I think I do better live with people than on on these kind of meetings, but in the times we are in, it's probably prudent to stay at least for now. Um, I would hate to have to go through the budget process all on Zoom. It might just kill me.
Let's not have that happen. Is there an option for us to, I I seem to recall, somebody correct me, I seem to recall that it was a little bit of an all or nothing. Either we're all remote or I I I thought maybe there were some challenges and I don't know if it was our rules of procedure challenges or if it were technical challenges on us doing a hybrid uh where we could either stagger certain council members just to create more distance, personal preference. Um, you know, again, or somebody can, can you give me some guidance there? Are we able to have a hybrid where a couple of us are in chambers and entertaining the public in chambers? Um, and others are remote?
Yeah, let me, let me talk, let me talk about the chambers first. We can address the spacing on the dais by taking everybody off except the council members and give them enough room between between themselves to sit up there if you wish. Now, we put staff out in the audience. We've already uh adjusted the council's chambers to spread out the seats six feet as as we a lot less audience, but there's a, you know, I think it'll handle what we have usually. And if we, if we have a big crowd, we can always go electronically in the building like you did when you had the police issue. And Dan, you can follow up that.
Yeah, so to kind of speak to the hybrid model, um, the short answer is it needs some, if the council chambers need some additional investment to allow for a hybrid in-person remote meeting. Where the issue comes into right now is that there's an audio. If you have the Zoom meeting going live, the audio feeds back to the system. So you create this feedback loop that you can't get out of. Um, there are systems through tyranny that I bid out maybe five or six years ago that they were able to solve that um using a separate computer for streaming. Um, if I recall, I want to say it required some significant investment. I want to say it was approximately fifteen thousand dollars worth of new microphone system and some gating that had to happen. Um, that being said, I have talked to Paul Peterson, LA TV, to see if we couldn't figure out some sort of blend using our existing audio outlets to see if we couldn't kind of work around that that solution. Um, maybe some simple fixes such as council just use headphones and an inline mic may address some of that feedback issue. Um, but the short answer at this point, I would probably lean towards it would require some additional investment for it to function in a more of a turnkey situation. Right now it'd be sort of a short term. Um, I can maybe put a bandaid on it to get it to work, but long-term you run like that investment in equipment.
Yeah, I please.
There, there is a legal issue that may have led to the all or nothing uh question that you had. Um, if the council determines that it is prudent uh to return to council chambers, then that's where council members have to be. Uh, and if you wish to participate remotely, we're into a different statute now uh that gives you a couple of options to participate remotely. The first is the one that's been in the law and will continue to be in the law uh which requires that your remote location also be open. Not your home. Uh, and and the second is uh new legislation that just passed um that allows a council member to be in quarantine and attend a meeting. Uh, there is a limit to the number of times a council member can do that in a year. Uh, the idea being um, we can get through uh several weeks, months, month and a half for a council member before that member needs to either be absent from the council meeting or in a public location.
That is um good food for thought for that public location. So if we do allow for remote participation, um, I'm not able to sit here in my living room and participate, or I am able to sit in my living room. I just need to list that I am I need to open my living room to the public. What is, what? Is that the?
Um, I'm not sure that that question is, has been conceived of in the statute, but I believe uh it has to be a public place. I don't think a private home would.
Okay.
I think that's true too.
Okay. Um, and so that would be the remote participation guidelines that we would go under and I so then now you're in a public space trying to accommodate a meeting in a public space. And in our current situation where coffee shops are just really, you know, limited and there's just limited places of where that could be. Um but it, that's interesting to contemplate. Yes, we want to do it from a, we, we want to do it from, we want to re- uh encourage a remote participation. But by going to a public space, it's kind of taken away the benefit of, I'm in my, you know, I'm in my home, not leaving my home. Um that's worth some consideration. Now, as long, now, so we don't need to tackle that though until we are, have expired, for whatever reason, the um emergency order has expired, right?
Um, Your Honor, that is, that is correct. You are not required to wait for the emergency order to expire for the council to determine that you've, you've made it prudent and and practical to return to council chambers. But as long as the order is in place, you have the discretion to decide it's not prudent to return.
Okay. Um, and does our, are we, if for some reason the governor allows his current emergency orders to expire, are we able to extend or are we dependent on the governor's orders, helping with that sequencing as well?
Um, Your Honor, members of the council, the statute that that allows uh the mayor, the city administrator or the city attorney to declare that it's not prudent or or practical uh to meet in person is based on an emergency declared under chapter twelve. Um, you have the power to declare an emergency under chapter twelve. The governor has the power to declare an emergency under chapter twelve. The trick is if you were to declare one when the governor has said, we're done with it, uh, you would need a a good public record basis for finding why the city of Forest Lake has a public emergency that doesn't otherwise exist in the state. So for all practical purposes, when the governor says we're done, uh, we should be done.
Okay. So I, I kind of look at this in two ways. One is we've got this policy decision to make around safety and where we conduct meetings. And I think we've got some information now to chew on. What does that look like? But then we've also got the practical aspect. And I guess I would encourage us to proceed with getting those upgrades done to City Hall so that we are able to accommodate a mixed meeting. Um, we are one body, but we know that we've got all of the city, um we've got all of the different city boards and commissions as well. And some of those, some of those members may prefer to meet in person and I I guess us not having the, those capabilities as a barrier, I'd, I'd like to see us overcome that. And I, I get that it's fifteen thousand dollars, but we're also in a pandemic. And to me, it's a way of us continuing to maintain transparency, allowing those individual boards and commissions to make the right decisions for them and recognizing that some do prefer to be in person. Um, and I I just, I would just hate for us to have an equipment barrier be the barrier for us to have that flexibility. Um, other thoughts on that? And it is pouring rain here. So if you hear feedback, I, my apologies. Yeah, Councilmember Beister.
I think I'd, you know, that's, that's no s- small change. Um, I guess my my request would be some analysis on who, who is actually interested in going that route before we make that investment. I I'm not opposed to that kind of an investment, but I um, I guess I would like to better understand. You know, is it a prudent investment if it's going to be a um, a short-term issue or will there be that will benefit over the long term in some way, shape or form? So I guess I'd like to, you know, I maybe unpack that a little bit more, just so I'm I'm making a well-informed decision should we decide to go that route.
Well, and I think that's an issue we can do, but my biggest question is that we have June eighth coming up. What do you want to do?
The two meetings coming up, I think we should continue to plan for those being remote. And I would encourage boards, I would encourage boards to um continue to plan to be remote. I just think that is just smart practice. Um, my concern is I don't have a crystal ball on when the governor's emergency declaration is going to expire and when we are going to be in a, in a situation of if we're going to allow remote participation, we need to have the technology to do so. And it's that gap I'm a little uncomfortable with, but that is a, you know, it's a gap further down the road.
And I think just to speak to that gap and and technology, I mean, I think there's there are things I can put into place in council chambers to get us through that. Like, I think if I needed to get a system up and running in, say, a week, I could theoretically get one up and running in a week. Would it be the best audio system in the world? Probably not. But at least it would get us started if you need to do a hybrid system. And to those quotes, those quotes came in five, six, you know, five years ago. The software at that time for remote meeting was a lot different than it is now. So I'm thinking with the new software, those quotes could change, the dynamics could change. Um, so I can reach back out to my contacts that originally developed those quotes and see if I can't get an updated system based on the new software packages. Cause when these were done, Zoom didn't exist at that point. Zoom was not, you know, functioning. And the biggest issue was the latency in feedback or latency in conversation. And Zoom seems to have really shortened that gap, you know, using the technology. So I think the bids could come back more favorable, you know, just based on where the software is at this point. So I can go back and get those updated to to see how it would work with a hybrid model.
I think that's, I think that's smart. I'd, I'd, I'd welcome seeing what those, what that looks like. And then also just, you know, future consideration and kind of the practical aspect of um, if we, remote participation means that you're being in a public space, I guess councils think about whether if that, is that public space somewhere other than City Hall? Or is that at that point, are we just having everyone in person socially distanced with those precautions? Um, we don't need to make that decision tonight, but be, think about what that might look like and how do we need to change our rules of procedure to support that? Down the road, once we're outside of the emergency declaration. All right. Anything else related to this topic? Next couple of meetings, remote. And Councilmember Gerard, we'll see what we can do with your budget, with those budget conversations. All right. Not hearing any other discussion on this topic. Let's move on to staff updates. Um, let's start with emergency management. Let's start with Chief Peterson and then we'll go to Captain Weiss afterwards. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
Good, good. Um, well, good evening to everybody. I have a couple of items for you. Um, a few weeks ago, we started having technical difficulties with our Forest Lake Police Department. And um, we've had a few citizens call us and notify us that it actually went down two weeks ago. I just wanted to let you know. So if you do have any, get any calls or emails that we know about it, we're working with Facebook and our ID, IT department to try, try to um remedy and resolve the issue. If we do have any updates, we're gonna be utilizing the city's web um Facebook page. And we'll have Dan update any items from a, from a police standpoint. And as you know, over the past few weeks, the police department has been participating.
And as you know, over the past few weeks, the police department has been participating in the, uh, birthday drive-bys for children. Uh, to date, we've participated in 46 of those events in almost three months. Uh, due to an increase in calls for service and now the governor's executive order changing from a, uh, stay-at-home to a, uh, stay-safe order. And the easing of the state's restrictions, uh, we're going to be discontinuing the police birthday drive-bys on June 1st. Uh, but I definitely want to, um, send out a big thank you to all those that assisted with these. And these continued support for all the first responders. And lastly, we are definitely back to normalcy now. When you're looking at the calls for service, I know I've mentioned that a couple of times. They've been, uh, increasing slightly over the past few weeks. And, um, we are definitely back to where we were well before, um, this pandemic hit us. And we're at about anywhere from 40 to 60 calls for service a day. Which is, uh, keeping us definitely very busy. And other than that, I don't have anything for you unless you have questions for me. And if you don't have questions for me, I'll turn it over to Captain Weiss.
Anything for Chief Peterson before we hear from Captain Weiss? Not seeing any. Thank you, Chief. Captain, good evening.
Good evening all. Mayor, members of council. I really don't have anything further. City Administrator Casey, you know, nailed the, the restaurants and the bars and the expanded spaces. Uh, working very closely with Karen and, and getting that, uh, done with Chief Newman and just trying to help businesses out in any way we can as we slowly open up here. So outside of that, unless you have any questions for me, I don't have anything.
Any questions for Captain Weiss? Council member Bystrum, go ahead.
Um, actually either Chief Peterson or Captain Weiss, I, are we, are we seeing an increase in mental health calls, chief? Um.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've seen a real increase. Uh, there's definitely, you know, some tension and some stress out there. Um, you know, we don't always know about certain calls for service and if it's, you know, um, a mental health issue. Uh, sometimes, you know, we do, we, uh, respond to somebody's calls and you, and you, you don't know. But there's definitely some tension and some stress out there, some frustrations, uh, just like any other city that's out there. But I don't think we've seen any kind of an increase, nothing that would, you know, jump out us and say, wow, there's, you know, a 10 or 20 or 30% increase. I don't think that's the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, let's hear from Patrick and we'll hear from Dan after Patrick.
Yeah, I've given you my, uh, report. So I, unless you have questions for me, I don't have anything else.
Any questions for Patrick this evening? All right, Dan, and then we'll hear from Karen after Dan.
Uh, just a quick airport commission update. Um, I've been working with Silas from Bolton to keep the airport layout plans process moving forward. Um, he solicited feedback from the commission, um, email submissions back to him. There are compiling that right now into the next version of the airport layout plan. Although I'll work with the airport commission to get a meeting scheduled here probably in the next couple of weeks so they can review. The updated plans and then develop their preferred alternative for the airport layout. So. There will be a meeting coming up, remote scheduled meeting for the airport commission here in the next couple of weeks.
Perfect. Dan, is that an on-cycle meeting or is that a special meeting off, off-cycle?
It'll probably be off-cycle. I'd have to go back. We got off-cycle with COVID in the planning process.
Yeah.
We've been trying to do it remote. So I'm going to try to get them back on the cycle meetings. Um, but I will get ones.
Okay.
I don't want the airport layout process to lose its backend deadlines. So we're, we're, we are still on track to get it completed in a timely fashion. But I want to make sure we're keeping that ball moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Dan? Seeing none, let's go to Karen and we'll go to Peter after Karen. Karen, any further updates for us this evening?
No further updates.
Very good. Peter, and then we'll hear from Ryan after Peter.
Uh, Your Honor, I have no updates, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Peter? I've asked all of my Peter questions already. Thank you. Um, Ryan and then Jamie after Ryan.
Mayor of City Council, uh, going for the big switch over on the running project tomorrow. Hopefully the weather didn't have any changes with that and washouts. Uh, from what you guys were saying, but we will, will be switching traffic to the north side so we can, can continue to work on the south side. As that project has been proceeding very nicely with the early starts, uh, obviously with school not in session right now. So. Uh, just want to remind you guys all and keep spreading the word. We haven't had any applications submitted yet for the irrigation rebate program. Uh, through the water conservation rebate program that's, um, we're leading. There is a link on the Facebook page and I still believe it's on the city's website. But we're kind of off to a slow start, obviously with everything going on. So I need to spread the word on that. So that's basically a rebate program for, um. Irrigation. Systems, uh, the components of irrigation and the controls, whether they go to a high-efficiency. Uh, materials, they could get money back, uh, through that program of a grant that's, I believe it was mid 20,000s that the city received from. Uh, with that, um, if we don't get any applications, I've talked with Public Works, Dave Adams, this today. We might ask for amendments with our agreement to allow bullets and washing machines like we previously did. So we can actually have some dent into the water capacity, um, daily use, uh, moving forward. Also, I could not find it on the city's website or Facebook page, but I believe that the Washington County Pet and Bike, uh, Plan Survey is still out live. So then maybe re-swing that out. Uh, it's just got lost in the thread of stuff. Uh, but it's important that, you know, your, you guys' comments are put on that, that basically took less than 10 minutes to do. So it's very easy to fulfill, but, uh, more interest we can get in the North County. Hopefully that's where improvements and funding follow. So again, um, push that out to anybody that you, you know, that will fill that out. So we can get a lot of comments in the North County. Uh, we awarded the Seaco project tonight and then, um, the local street project is potential looking at a start date into June. Uh, kind of see where things go. Uh, and with your Fourth of July pray and stuff, if that's all, if we got to work around that stuff still, so. Still some coordination with that, but everything is in the queue. So I guess with that, I'll just open up with any specific questions the council might have.
Any specific questions for Ryan? It was good to see that our sewer project is still on a bonding list. Um, has not, that bill has not moved forward, but good to see that at least one of our items are still on that list. So nice work on getting it to that, this point, and we'll see what happens next with any special session that might happen. All right. Thank you, Ryan. Jamie.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. I do have a few updates. I'll try to get through these quickly for you. Um, so first, the facility use agreement, um, just a quick update on that was on our council agenda tonight and, um, that was removed. But just a quick note, um, that facility use agreement will be coming back to council. It's between, um, the force, city of Forest Lake and Forest Lake Athletic Association. Um, for priority use and scheduling of the athletic complex at Fenway. Um, everything's changing daily with COVID-19 right now. So, um, last Wednesday, Governor Walz provided an update on youth sports. And unfortunately, it was still pretty restrictive, only allowing for practices of small groups of 10 or less. Um, and no games are allowed yet. So just later last week, there's still a lot of uncertainty and concern around what the season may look like for youth sports and athletics. So, um, we're just going to revisit this as a Fenway Athletic Advisory Committee. Um, a little, a little more time for another update on youth sports and then bring this back to council. Um, targeting a June 8th timeline for that. So just a quick update on that, um, what, where we're at with that. Um, secondly, Arts in the Park, um, last Tuesday, May 19th, the Parks Commission, um, did have a regular meeting. And they, um, did make a difficult decision to cancel Arts in the Park for July and August. However, the Parks Commission is going to spend this time now coming up with some alternative, um, smaller group events that we can ho, hold for the community. Things that are more predictable environments, um, spread out to more locations that we can control a little bit better. So it was a tough decision, but it was based on a lot of factors. Um, obviously kind of an alignment, council discussion tonight. Following the current executive orders, um, right now we only can have 10 or less and there's just a lot of uncertainty on when that's going to. Be expanded to large group settings of hundreds of people together. Um, really, that Memorial Park with hundreds of people is a really unpredictable environment, um, hard to maintain social distancing. Um, and the safety measures that would need to be met for the CDC and, um, Minnesota Department of Health. Um, there's a lot of, you know, the event coordinating with vendors and, um, different entertainment groups. We're approaching some deadlines for that. And we've seen quite a few other communities cancel similar events. And then really lastly, the health and safety of the community, um, just bringing that many people together in the near future. Um, you know, we just want to look out for the community. So the June 16th Parks Commission will have some new ideas on the table. Um, again, just to bring something to the community, um, this summer for July, August and likely into the fall. So more to come on some just different ways to be creative this year. Um, the Forest Lake Farmers Market is going to still happen. Um, again, that's an essential item. So targeting a June 16th start date at the Forest Lake City Center Parking Lot with, on Tuesdays from 4:30 to 7:30. So working through that and planning to continue that is scheduled. So just, uh, last, a couple more things quick here, just some general park COVID-19 updates. Patrick touched on some of this for city updates and operations. Um, but we've seen a, a pretty, a big uptick in requests for facility use at this time. Um, so the Parks Commission did also approve, um, that we will follow the executive orders by the state of Minnesota on allowing use of our facilities. So right now, a lot of people are putting in requests for the gazebo, shelter reservations, want to get out on the fields. So we're only going to authorize, approve any requests that come forward that are in alignment with executive orders. Um, which I think is in line with, alignment with council. Um, and also the city started some conversations. We're working closely with the school district, developing some guidelines for. Um, so we are on the same page with field use and, um, really making sure that we're, um, teams that in groups that want to get back to the fields. Are in, in alignment with the city and the school. So, um, I have seen quite a few groups that are looking to get outside this summer. So I've had requests for boy scout camp, stance groups. Um, you know, a lot of those indoor activities are not recommended. So I'm, I'm anticipating, um, some increased use and requests coming forward that we're going to have to navigate. Um, in the coming weeks here, um, as people look to bring their activities outside. So just a note on that. Um, and as Patrick mentioned, from a park amenities standpoint, we did open the playgrounds with the caution. To sanitize and wash hands when you're, when you're done using the playgrounds. And then also we did open the bathrooms and park staffs cleaning those daily. Sanitizing with hospital-grade sanitation hourly, also wiping down picnic tables and benches at the park, um, during staff hours. So. Um, and then just lastly, Castlewood, um, obviously the liquor license, um, being approved at the state level pending governor's signature, um, came forward. And we talked about tonight, um, things continue to be steady, um, sometimes very busy at Castlewood. And our managers continuing to, um, modify and change, um, looking to add some pizza by the slice. And just try to continue to improve that experience for golfers. And the city staff will provide a detailed report to council, um, mid-season. So we're looking at maybe late June or early July with a full report to, to council. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any at this time.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for Jamie or further clarifications? Hearing none. Thank you so much. We will move on to council updates. We'll start with council member Husnick and then council member Bystrum. Sam, any updates this evening?
Uh, no, I have no further updates this evening. Thank you, Mara.
Excellent. Council member Bystrum.
Um, I attended the May 19th, uh, Parks, Twos and Lakes Commission meeting. Jamie summarized that well. Um, excited that the farmers market will continue to be held, although it'll be a little more transactional. Uh, rather than, um, like a more of a social gathering like it has been in the past. It's still going to meet some great need we have in the community. So that's great. Um, the, I've been in regular contact with the senior center. Uh, they have extended their closure date through July 5th. Um, uh, Sharon, the center coordinator, uh, gave me permission to announce that she has, um, formally announced her retirement to her board. Um, but she will be staying on, uh, until the center can be operational again. Um, and then for a period of time, um, beyond that to orient to the new coordinator. Um, they are currently accepting resumes, Dan. I'd like to get some information out on that, but I have to gather a few more details. On, you know, where those resumes are sent to, what deadlines are, um, and I'll be sure to do that for you. Um, and then I have also been asked to serve on the interview team for that position. So, um, being the city liaison to the board and I'm honored to, to be able to do that. So that's my report, Mayor Bean.
Very good. Thank you so much, council member Munson, and then we'll do council member Gerard afterwards.
Um, Mayor Bean, no update tonight.
Very good. Council member Gerard.
Uh, good evening. I, uh, did a planning commission, uh, a couple of items of note. Uh, there's a storage fee over by the auto dealers that is looking to win. Um, so there was a grading permit there that was tabled and the next night they had a neighborhood meeting. The neighbors attended. It was, it was very polite, very informative. And the developer was going to do more work with the local neighbors to see if, um, everyone could be satisfied with the final outcome on that. And the, uh, planning did discuss the rooster issue that we covered at our last meeting. And, uh, they, um, agree that, uh, current policies and, uh, rules as we have them, ordinances are good as they are. Um, they, they didn't think that, um, any changes needed to be made at this time.
Very good. Thank you, council member Gerard. Any questions for council member Gerard? All right. I just have a couple of quick updates. We had talked fairly extensively about the same topics that we covered in the EDA meeting. Um, maybe two other information points to add. Um, we are looking to reconvene the downtown group. Um, that down, that downtown initiative group that we had put together and was scheduled to have a kickoff meeting just right as COVID started. I think it was actually our first meeting that we canceled. Um, we are looking to reconvene that meeting in some format or reconvene that group in some format at the end of July. Um, there's some, um, reasons to, you know, keep, uh, kind of get back to that agenda and to keep that focused. Um, and, and Dan's done a nice job of laying out the groundwork. We will keep an, um, eye on how we are structuring that meeting, if that is an in-person meeting or a remote meeting or how, you know, how we'll facilitate that. But we are looking to, um, kind of reconvene that at the end, that fourth Monday in July. Um, as new kickoff, so something to mark on your calendar. Um, we also, um, saw the preview and actually that the video has actually been released. That, um, LA TV did with the chamber on, um, we talked about creating some marketing content for businesses. Um, because of the, kind of the situation on where we are in this, um, COVID situation, the first video that came out is more of a sampler story. That kind of surveys five different business owners in an interview format and kind of tells their COVID story. Um, and what they, what this has meant for them and how they have had to be innovative, what's on their mind. Um, uh, Nanette from the chamber posted the link. The link is also available on the LA TV site. Um, we'll get that link out there. I would encourage you to, um, take a look at it. It's impactful and meaningful. And it's a lovely, uh, representation of a talent that we have with Paul Peterson at LA TV and the quality of video that can be made. Um, and also, um, not surprisingly, we've got a backlog of about 20 businesses that have asked for that service. Um, and so Nan from the chamber and Dan have been tasked with how do we prioritize those, uh, for next steps and what's the next story to tell? Um, there's some discussion on if it's an, if we transition now into individual business stories. Or perhaps we also have an opportunity because of where we are and the June 1st opening deadline of maybe doing another kind of combined story around. Um, what do those June 1st openings look like and getting some information out as well as featuring some of the businesses that are doing the really hard work. So they'll put some thought to that and then help to pri, kind of prioritize those additional resources. Um, so, you know, Paul extended thanks to the cable commission for providing access to Paul and those talents. Um, we're tremendously just. We're tremendously just, we've just got a gem of talent available for us. Our capacity here is really Paul's time. And, you know, if you kind of think about how, how might we provide additional resources to get more videos produced, we're already at the limit of Paul's time. So he's booked up here for the near term with some school events. But once we get into June, his calendar opens up a bit and he can put some more time towards some of those video production, getting some of that content out there. The digital downtown is live. I think most of you have seen that. We want to keep that fresh and so whatever we can do to continue to get that out, especially as we have restaurants opening in new capacities here in the next week or so. It's good to get that kind of condensed spot to see all of that content. Except for the, from the EDA update, we did have a discussion with the 4th of July Committee for the Legion. As you know, the parade as we know it has, you know, they've decided that they will not do a parade as we know it. They haven't officially announced the cancellation of the fireworks, but I suspect that is the path that they are on. We do have another update call with them on Thursday to talk about logistics and trying to get some information public. They do want to do a virtual event, some sort of a virtual parade. And we wanted a little more definition around what that looks like so we can provide the clarity when that announcement is made and we should know more on Thursday. So, you know, as we talk about what does it mean from a city perspective on street closures and, you know, some of the traditional city involvement related to the 4th of July this year will be definitely a very different event. Just want to be crisp on what we can do and what we're announcing, what we can do as we're announcing what isn't going to happen this year. So more to come on that. Any else around updates or questions? All right, not seeing any. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
I'll take it.
Council member, I've got a motion and a second. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mute.
Member Husnick.
Aye.
Council member Gerard.
Aye.
Council member Munson.
Aye.
Council member Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Be well.
Thank you.